Some do, some don't. Depends on where you're at. I'm confused as what I should be bothering sending for recycling. I mean, I know not styrofoam.
What recycling do you have?
Well, like they have the numbers on them.
Right. Do you have single stream and all?
Single stream.
Okay. So you're supposed to get three through sevens, you're fine. And then we just, we take it, we get the ones and twos out, and then we send the three through sevens to a broker that takes them out themselves. Then usually they get fives out and other stuff. Everybody has.
Well, like the, you know, when the milk jugs, the cats, you know, and stuff like that.
Just flatten the milk jug, put the cat back on.
With the cat pack on?
Same order, that takes up more airspace.
Well, I do flatten them out. I do flatten stuff out.
Because all they're going to do is go with chips. They're got chip. That's how they reprocess plastic.
I'm just trying not to waste my time and your time.
Just don't use hot water to clean out peanut butter container. Throw the peanut butter container out.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, don't, don't, don't. Because you're using more energy and resources to clean something, it's not worth it.
Yes.
I mean, a milk jug.
How do you know that I've been doing?
Because I know that everybody that wants to think they're doing the right thing are using more resources than what it's worth. Not like a milk jug. You can rinse a milk jug out real quick and be done with it. Even me, I need a little bit. But peanut butter, peanut butter is a lot of cost.
Okay.
Good morning.
Yeah, it's one of those things. I'm trying to be, you know, the best so soon I can.
You try to do the right thing.
But, you know, I see where, like, some places, they don't even. It's just one of the.
Yeah, yeah. You try to do the right thing, but it's not for us a lot of times. So don't worry about it.
But, you know, like next week, that's one of the reasons I wish I could give some money for going around, I'll just say to the schools and senior centers and educating people, like, you know, the peanut butter jar just started.
Well, we have, we have education outputs, but it's, it's hard. People, even like some, people have preconceived notions of what's right and wrong because they might hear news that affects, that comes from somewhere and how they state it. So.
Well, like my mom, she'd lay her all the cans, like the lady. You know, she was, you know, like, oh, you got a recycle it.
No, just, no, because they have blue one.
My grandma, my mom, environmental totalitarian.
Yeah, no, no reason to believe in that.
Yeah, you know, as a kid, you know, like, you know, got it. And she.
You make the best of it.
Well, now I don't have the peanut butter jar. What if I do rinse?
That's fine, don't you want?
Well, I'm just, you know, like, it's still recyclable. I wish it.
Yeah, but you have to make sure that food.
Okay. Well, like one of the things, you know, from hearing you talk, you know, I used to have times where, you know, I'd put stuff in the grocery bag. He said, no, they called up the machine, I see myself.
Yeah, the plastic bags.
You know, something like, you know, I had to, you know, like, stop doing that.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing plastic bags.
Sorry to trouble you.
No, that's a very good question. Another day, another day here. I'd love to have to answer questions.
Good, how are you, Commissioner?
Good, how you doing?
I didn't make it to the meeting, you know.
That's all right, we didn't have one.
No, no.
Okay, good.
He's on my board.
Okay.
You got my message, though, right?
Yes. Thank you.
My phones will be going off the whole time because government insists on it.
Okay.
Morning, who do we have?
This is Jamie, we're seated on.
Morning, Jamie.
Morning.
Good morning. Okay, good morning, everyone. I ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance before we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, you are the God of peace. We pray this morning to clear our minds and establish our steps. Let your presence be known and lead this meeting today. Purify our thoughts so that each of us will desire the good of others. That will be in accordance with your will. Lord, there are many forms of evil in this world, and one of those evils masks itself without a face. It steals privacy, financial accounts, and identities to satisfy its corrupt agenda. Technology's helped us in many ways, but it needs those accountants. It needs those professionals to help protect the cybersecurity privately and nationally. This month, we remember National Security, National Cybersecurity Month. Lord, let us be aware and on guard against those that strive to create havoc and uncertainty. Lord, we pray for our county, state, and country in these divided times. Help us to be good listeners, have productive conversations, resolve any disputes gracefully, and seek your wisdom and guidance for a solution led by your spirit. Let us unify with good plans to take action on those established goals. May we have a sense of a team spirit and work together in unity and love. Now we place this meeting in your hands. We ask for your blessing on our beautiful valley and our glorious home we call America. We humbly place these requests before you, Lord. Amen.
....................................
Before we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting, I'd like to acknowledge two birthdays. First of all, we have Larry Stout in the back of the, back of the room. We all know Larry and have great respect for Larry, what he does for his community, and through the library, and through the fire company, and through the service on the council. And he has hit a milestone birthday. It's always a pleasure to see him here, and we all have tremendous respect for you. Happy birthday, Larry. And then our director, Matt McDermott, had a birthday same day, Larry. So they share the same birthday.
Are you thirty-six? Because I'm thirty-six.
And Director, thank you for what you do for the county and your service. Happy birthday. At this time, while we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting, we have some additions to the following agenda. Director?
Commissioners, seeking your approval to remove Action Item 7.14 from the agenda today. That is the purchase of ballistic panels. We need to go out for a new pricing.
You have some stuff to add, too, right?
Yeah, there's something to add, too.
Oh, hold on. And we're going to add 7.1. Vote to approve Amendment 1 to the subrecipient agreement with South Plainsport Borough for 2018 CDBG funds. And we're adding 7.3. Vote to approve allocation of Act 13 funds to the Hiawatha.
Okay. I'll move to add the items to the agenda and to remove the item specified.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. At this time, we'll ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Operations Point 1.5, public comment on agenda items only at this time. Do we have any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Move on to reports.
Okay, 2.1 and 2.2 ran. Proof accounts payable, cash requirement report, and jury panel number nine.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through November 2nd, 2022, that were paid on October 26, 2022, in the amount of $950,615.94.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll move to.
I'll second.
Any questions for Ray? Hearing none, all fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Presented for your ratification is jury panel nine, that were paid on October 26, in the amount of $18,273.66.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Ray.
Okay, moving on to information items. Prison recruitment update. And I put a sheet on each end there.
Morning, Ally.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Director. I prepared a prison recruitment report update. So moving for the first is from July 25th and forward for the CO1 positions, full-time relief, male and female. We had a total of 100 and eight applicants. Of those 100 and eight applicants, we hired 10, terminated four, and we currently have onboard five anticipated hires. Two of those anticipated hires applied after the rate increase, and 24 of those 100 and eight applicants applied after the rate increase. Moving forward, we have the CO1 part-time female and male positions. We have a total of four applicants for each of those roles, and we anticipate to hire one. And the last one is the full-time LPN posting. We had a total of 12 applicants, and we anticipate to hire one full-time applicant.
Okay, so a couple of good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any comments from the Commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Jessica?
Personnel actions.
Good. Good morning, Commissioners. I have the following personnel actions. These are conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of background checks and all other employment requirements. So for the prison, we are promoting Monica Laird into a full-time sergeant position. The pay rate is 24.29 per hour, and she's anticipated to transfer on October 30. Also, for the prison, a full-time CO replacement, Danielle Dimick, at the new pay rate of $20 an hour, and she's anticipated to start on the 31st. Also, for the prison, Terry Leonard, LPN, full-time replacement, at the new pay rate of $30 an hour, and anticipated to start on November 7. For the prison, Zachary Miller, CO relief position. This is a part-time position. This was a recent change to their TDA, allowing for part-time opportunities to give some more flexibility at the prison scheduling. So this is Zach Miller, anticipated to start on November 7 at a pay rate of $20 an hour. The next is for the prison, Danielle Gabbard, CO position, full-time replacement, $20 an hour, November 14. This is anticipated start date. Also, for the prison, Dalton Shank, CO relief, full-time replacement, $20 an hour, anticipated to start on November 14. For the pre-release center, Taylor Cashner, RS1 position, part-time replacement, and she will start at 15.95 an hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, and she's anticipated to start on November 14. For the sheriff's office, Charlene Matlack, Clerk 3, full-time replacement, starting, God bless you, at 14.44 per hour. She's anticipated to start on Monday, October 31. And then in the public defender's office, Taylor Paul Hamis. She was recently promoted to the Assistant Public Defender position, and her pay rate will be $53,543.83. The transfer took place on October 16. Lots of action from the recruitment end, as Ally explained, and we've made lots of progress this past week on our prison recruitment.
Yeah, I want to thank the prison board for being together collectively to help resolve, find some solutions to help the prison and their staff. And I thank the ward and the deputy wardies for searching for solutions, too, and across the state, bringing those ideas to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank the controller for reaching out to all those people who had worked there and asking them, Krista Rogers, asking them if they would be interested in working part-time and was successful in.
Recruiting it back. One of our prior CEOs, that was Zach Miller. He's going to be coming back in a part-time capacity while he's finishing his schooling. So it works out perfectly, and I was very appreciative to Krista for doing that outreach as well.
Absolutely. She took her time and called back two dozen people and asked them.
Absolutely. So the prison board, you know, there's a lot that's happened since that prison board meeting. I appreciate the Commissioners for assisting with helping to bump up the pay rate for the CO position. It's been helping us a lot.
Absolutely. And then we also want to thank Sergeant T. Francisco for his dedication and hanging in there with the staff and his hours. Like we stayed last week, the gentleman's working 70 consecutive days, and we tell him it's late, the end of the tunnel, so.
And we'd be remiss if we didn't thank those existing employees who have stuck through this mandated overtime for over a year now and have continued to stay with it, and we appreciate what they've done.
Pay more stress on each one of their families.
Yeah, and thank their families, actually.
Absolutely.
Not being able to see their.
I'd just like to add that, you know, sometimes, the reporter that was in contact with us, not in this room here, but really pushing for answers to some of the questions, and the Commissioners or the prison board will never compromise the safety of our staff or the inmates at our prison. So I know he found it offensive that we wouldn't answer a few of the questions, but, you know, that's just the way it is. So I offer no apology, apology to him as well.
Okay. I have a motion to accept these.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. At this time, we'll recess the Commissioners' Public Meeting for the salary board, and we'll convene the salary board at this time.
All right. I am seeking approval for the reclassification of Morgan Stone, resident supervisor, to fully qualified, based on her experience with the county and she will, and her education, and she'll be reclassified to a pay grade six.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to. I'm sorry.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Big discussion of questions. All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board and we'll convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting.
Okay, TDA actions. Jessica?
All right. So I'm going to run through these a little quicker here, but pre-release reclassification for Morgan Stone to a pay grade six due to her education and experience. And I missed a page here. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
You can't go to square.
All right, that's it.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on to action items. 7.1, Jamie, vote to approve amendment onto subrecipient agreement with South Plainsport Borough, 2018 CDBG funds.
Where are you, Jamie?
Deputy Lizard?
No, she was on there earlier.
Yeah.
Maybe she's muted.
Oh, I think I was muted.
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm unmuted. So the 2018 subrecipient agreement amendment in front of you with South Plainsport is to extend that 2018 contract termination date to December 15 of 2022, and to add the Center for Independent Living Air Conditioning Project to that contract.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good day.
You, too.
7.2, approval of policy factor.
Yes. So this is the tool allowance policy, and we are making a change to this policy, changing the monthly allowance to $150 and the maximum yearly allowance to $1,800 per calendar year. And this would be, this updated rate would be effective for January 1, 2023.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
7.3, Maya, are you on? Okay. Initiate a meeting. I'll take it. Commissioner, seeking your approval to allocate Act 13 funds to the Hiawatha. This is in the amount of $70,000. And the reason why we're asking for approval on the allocation is we're working out the details for the grant monitoring. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I think that the Commissioners have come to the conclusion that the Hiawatha is an asset in our community. Someone may not drive from Boston here to ride the Hiawatha, but if they're here and they're at a hotel and they see it, or someone tells them about it, the evidence is that they do get on it. And it's a great way for us to highlight our area and to have people leave the area with a feeling that, oh, maybe I'd like to come back and live here. And that's, that's unfortunately, and it's also, by the way, a great place for our local residents to improve the quality of life for our families and our kids. And between the increases in fuel costs and insurance and everything else, it's very hard for that entity to become, you know, a profit-making entity. So it is a standalone 501, I think it's a C3. Matt, do you remember if it's a C3 or a C10? But I guess my personal feeling is that it's something worth keeping alive in this community.
And the chamber is also assisting in funding it. It's required $30,000 this year towards.
From the hotel tax.
Cool.
From the hotel tax, right?
No, we had a commitment from the tourist promotion agency that they would commit up to $50,000 next year.
I thought we were going to go with the, this is for 2022.
This is 2022.
This is 2022.
Going forward, they would be.
But then they'd be cutting the community off, right? Yeah, I would rather we just fund it. But in any event, it's going to be funded this year. So that's, that's good news.
And I want to thank Frank Balgrino for all the hard work. The numbers show that the ridership was up this year. Scott, you've experienced from other people over at the Little League how they enjoyed riding on it and thought our area was beautiful. As Commissioner Maravito stated, that it is a gem. Were there issues as far as how they proceed and their schedules? Yes, but for the most part, it's, it's well-operated, so.
Yeah, it was heavily used this summer. I didn't know how much until I spoke to several people in the community, how heavily utilized it has been over this past summer. So it's good to hear that. And it helped take care of Suspana Park at the same time with maintaining the park itself. Because the city cannot maintain the park any longer with the Hiawatha to their, due to the agreement. And so they're taking care of the grass cleaning and all that throughout the park. And it's a beautiful park up there, Suspana Park's a beautiful park. That is also heavily used.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Okay, 7.4 and 7.5. These are two MOUs.
Excuse me one second, Director. I just want to note that the Hiawatha funds will definitely be coming down Act 13.
Okay.
So make the note of that for public. Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know. So 7.4 and 7.5 are two memorandums of understanding with West Branch Drug and Alcohol or our single authority. And the MOU is to provide Act 198 funding to West Branch Drug and Alcohol for both juvenile probation clients and adult offenders. Act 198, as you know, are restricted funds solely for that use.
Got a motion?
I'll move to approve both 7.4 and 7.5.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Just a quick comment. So the Act 198 doesn't come out of real estate property taxes, and it comes out of fees assessed on offenders.
Correct.
So that's just for the public.
And lastly, vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Rogers Unforms. And I recall, just a renewal with the agreement for additional year, same terms and conditions as this year.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, 7.7. Matt Long, are you on the line?
I'm on the line.
Better yet.
Where are you, Matt?
Morning. I want for everybody there. So the West Nile Bios Grant is also called the Mosquito Born Disease Control Grant. It's a program that the Conservation District runs to monitor, control, and treat from mosquitoes and their habitat in the county. It's a, it's a grant agreement through DEP. The grant fund's basically 100% of the program. This year, we're asking for $41,979.39. That covers all staffing costs, mileage for the vehicle we use, all the different trainings, the pesticides, the surveillance equipment to control products, everything. It's a, it's a very great program. It doesn't cost us really anything to implement. They reimburse us 100%, and we get to get rid of a lot of mosquitoes and their habitat in the county.
Good program, and of course, Carrie's been doing it quite a while. Carrie has.
Yep, we've been doing the program since 2017.
Yeah. This is an example of where our staff, who are on top of things, are getting state money to really deal with quality of life issues in the county. And it happens all over the county. The public never really knows about it, but staff people are constantly monitoring and making sure that we get our application. If we don't get an application in, we're not going to get the money, right, from the state?
Correct.
Right? So thank you for doing that.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Let me make this easy. 7.7 through 7.13, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Director. I have it down. Is it 7.8 through 7.13?
Yep.
Excuse me.
All right. Commissioners, first item, 7.8 is the approval, reappraisal, I will say that, of the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-550 Supercab. This truck is our truck that we had built for our welder. This truck was approved and purchased by you in the beginning of 2021. We are just finally ready to take receiving on the truck, and it is an increase of $14,672 because of the change of cost and time and metal and stuff. So the approval is for the $14,672 upcharge for the weld truck. So that includes the box, the chassis, and everything has changed that much since February, I believe it's February 21, that we originally ordered and had your approval. And it is in the budget. It was in the 2021 budget, and we rolled it over this year, too. So we're finally going to get it.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. So carry.
7.9 is a one-year extension at no cost increase to the county for an agreement with Council's appliance. Mr. Council is the individual that comes over and removes Freon from all the white goods that we receive from the area with Freon in it. We have to have the Freon extracted. So he has agreed to do another one-year extension at no increase.
So Jason, when our constituents go to drop off it, they don't have to have the Freon out?
No. Matter of fact, that's, if the Freon, if our constituents are caught releasing the Freon, that is a, I believe, a $20,000 fine.
Right.
Yeah.
And they shouldn't mess around trying to do it. That's the point.
Yes, they need to.
Just bring it.
A professional has to have a license.
Right.
And that has changed. Right? I mean, we, you used to have to remove it.
I think we used to have to bring it over to you with the Freon out. Years ago, yeah.
Well, maybe we.
I'm glad to know that.
Yeah, the EPA grounds highly on anyone trying to self-extract Freon without a license.
Right.
So.
That's good to know.
And that's refrigerators, air conditioners?
Yes, anything, yep. Anyone can, I believe even your dehumidifiers would have Freon in it too.
Yep.
Got motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioners, seven point ten. Seven point ten is the purchase of a twenty twenty two seven forty five, or a forty five haul truck from Highway Equipment, the amount of five hundred and eighty four thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars. It is through Sourcewell Program with a discount. And that also includes a trade-in of a two thousand and six forty-ton haul truck that we have on site. This is a twenty twenty three budgeted item. We are trying to get this in front of the twenty twenty three price increase that Volvo and pretty much every equipment company is putting out at the beginning of the year. So we will take shipment of this in twenty twenty three, but we need to get it on the books.
Got motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side.
Aye.
All right.
Seven, seven point eleven is an amendment to the agreement of quality air mechanical. This is, we've had, they've held their rates with us since twenty nineteen. They have now increased their rates pretty much about fifteen dollars an hour since the last contract we have. So this will be effective right, twenty twenty two. So the rates went, they were like, for the plumber, pipe fitter was seventy, now it's eighty five. Foreman was ninety, was eighty, now it's ninety five. So pretty much went up. They've held their rates eighteen, twenty, and twenty one with this, part of twenty two.
Got motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners, seven point twelve. This is the, every year I have to come before you for a fee schedule if it's a change. So in front of you, we'll just start with the easy ones. The landfill, there will be no tonnage increase at the landfill in Montgomery. We are raising the white good refrigerant per appliance as twenty dollars. There's some other asbestos changes, but for the hauler, it's still forty eight oh five. That is not changing. Where we are changing and where we have seen our drastic increases in cost is at the transfer station. At the transfer station, we are going across the board with a three-dollar increase to all the cash customers, individual accounts, commercial business accounts, hauling enterprise accounts, and certified waste haulers. And also, we have an oversized fee schedule that we've put in. This is to incentivize haulers and other folks with eight, nine-ton loads to come right over to the landfill. Not only do you get the forty eight oh five rate at the landfill, but you also be eligible for the discount system. And the discount is if they pay, I think before the eleventh or the fifteenth of the month, they get, basically on good behavior, they pay their bill upfront and they get a discount. So it's, it's a win for them. Also, it takes the tonnage out of us in the transfer station. We have a serious issue with bumper-to-bumper traffic on Third Street. That's no secret. We have increased costs for transportation, fuel, tires. It's the same story for them. We bought two new trailers. We put a new Packer in the transfer station. We still have other upgrades to continue to do. So we do need to put in the increase at the transfer station. And there will be also an increase. Single stream in this recycling center will be going from thirty five dollars to forty dollars. So it'll be a five-dollar increase for in-state single stream. And if any hauler outside of PA wants to bring a single stream, it goes from sixty five to seventy per ton. And that will be, this will all be, if you approve this, then we will have this out to our haulers and all of our customers at month end, this month, so two months' notice.
Got motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second. I have a question. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If, you know, and I've been over to the landfill with the transfer station many times. And I understand the backup and it can take a long time. Do you believe that if you had another scale and if the purchase of the property goes through and you had another scale, do you think we would increase the volume going through the transfer station or no?
I don't see it as an increase. There's only so much waste out there unless we bring in industry, which you guys are trying to do. We get additional commercial business into the city. That would help boost tonnage. But no, there's only so much tonnage. I mean, unless everybody, like COVID, everybody went out and remodeled their kitchen and their bathroom, that was a spike. But typically, you're not gonna see a super increase. What you are gonna see is something that's hard to put a price on is safety. You're gonna, our goal there would be to separate the residential and the commercial folks so that you don't have a four-yard box next to a Subaru. So we're trying to keep our safety parameters there. And that's, that's gonna be a task.
Any other questions? Okay, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Want to note that action items seven point eight and seven point through seven point twelve are paid for by the landfill revenues. So I want to stick to the thunder.
Stick to your thunder, sir.
Not paid from tax.
Commissioner Maravito usually says that.
Right. You beat me to the punch today.
Well, seven point thirteen, Commissioner, is also gonna be paid through the revenues. We have, need your approval for a minor permit mod for a solid waste permit. When the water line was handed over to Montgomery Water Authority, that then changed over. We need to put in a flow meter for monitoring the water usage that we have and also if we ever have used the fire suppression system in our recycling center, all that will be tracked because now Montgomery owns the water tower. So we have to maintain a flow meter for ourselves and for them to know what we use. We also are putting in, the permit mod will also have in a six-inch force main leach aid that we're going to run along that dirt road along Field Eleven. So there's some just changes. So anytime you make any kind of a change to your footprint or anything that you've had prior approval with DEP, you have to get a permit modification. So it's just the formality, have your signature, sir, and we send it in and get it approved. It'll be reviewed and approved.
Okay. Got motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Commissioners, if I may have one second of your time, I would be remiss if I did not extend a thank you out to two gentlemen that are in this room. Chief Winder and Chief Norman are here. I just would like to point out publicly that these two men support the landfill anytime, all time. Phone calls, whether it be O Dark Thirty, when we find a car parked with a person who's under the influence of alcohol, whether we have any kind of a fire at the recycling center on any day, holiday, off hours, whatever. But these two gentlemen and their teams support us one hundred percent and we try to extend our appreciation whenever we can. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, that completes the action items.
No more.
Nope.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was taking off.
Commissioner, comment?
I have a.
We have discussed the appraisal for the coroner's office.
That's under Commissioner, he's got a.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank Larry Stout and wish him a happy birthday. For years now, Larry, Larry has been writing about the county in his corner. And he has brought awareness of all the departments, of all the staff department heads, elected officials. And he's always given a good, positive, you know, report. Something that I'm sure he spends a lot of time on. But I can't thank you enough, right? It's always positive. We do get feedback, so it is read quite often. And they personally told me that they always look at the paper for that article. And it's, you've been an ally of ours. You're also in the community. You're just an outstanding person and we really appreciate everything you do for not only the county but for your own community.
So, Mr. Chairman, we talked last week about this appraisal, paying for an appraisal for this land over by the hospital. And this is, there are four parcels over there. The parcels that, there's actually two parcels that the hospital approached us about. And I want to talk a little bit about why I think that it's a bad move for us to move out and pay for an appraisal. And I know you've been looking at the options and so forth. So first of all, there's an alley that runs down between the two parcels. So we talked when we went and looked at it about, you know, okay, could the city, would the city abandon that alley? We would have to run that through a whole process. One of the reasons I'm bringing these up is because I think that part of our perspective on the corner has to be timeliness. I think that we all agree that what we do needs to be done in a timely manner, meaning as quickly as possible with income constraints, right? We're not just gonna go out and do something that doesn't make sense, but to do it in a way that's timely. The timeliness is as important because of certain times that have gone on with this. So we would have to find out if the city would abandon the alley. We would need to do a land development or subdivision plan to consolidate the lots. That involves going before certain municipal boards. It involves getting certain work done on consolidation. There are electrical poles running down the center of the two parcels. We would have to approach PP and L about removal of the poles and we would probably have to pay to remove the poles. By the way, I'm gonna let, I see the coroner here. I'm gonna let him get into all the safety issues and other things, but I just want us to understand as elected officials, some of the roadblocks that would be required on that land before we, you know, pay the appraisal. Our experience with PP and L on the bridge bundling program that we did, and I think both of you were privy to conversations we had, PP and L has a very specific timetable for doing things like moving poles. Like, we can't just call up PP and L and say, okay, we should come in next week and move the poles. It literally takes months and months and months. And we ran into that problem with bridge bundling where we thought they were gonna move some poles and it wasn't on their schedule. And they flat out said they cannot do it because there are safety issues and all sorts of issues. And we end up, if you remember, we ended up with a, we ended up with a really good contractor who put the, that, we were moving those poles because we couldn't get the bridge in. He got the bridge under the poles, right? So the poles could stay. These poles have to come down because you can't consolidate the lots and build a building with the electrical lines and poles. That's gonna take time. At the zoning, if you look at the zoning ordinance for this, these properties, and I, I talked to the solicitor, the zoning ordinance doesn't have a box checked that says that government buildings are permitted. And we don't know whether this is because there was a typo made when they did it and that in fact they would allow government buildings. But if you've ever looked at a zoning book, there are boxes and they check what's allowed in each zone. And for some reason, government buildings are not checked. Now, you know, it may have been an oversight, but at the very least, we're gonna have to go, again, this is gonna take time, we're gonna have to go find out whether it was an oversight, bring it before the municipal body to have that approved because it's not, the box isn't checked for government buildings. There are setbacks that have to be considered. The mass fatality trailer is in excess of sixty feet. There are requirements for turning into a building that require a certain amount of space in the road and also there are setbacks required in the zoning ordinance. So it's questionable about whether we're gonna be able to put the size of the building once, on there, once we, once we deal with that. It was the table of uses that allows, there's no checkbox for the government buildings in the table of uses. It may have been an oversight, but at the very least, we're gonna have to go through some, some, some processes. And then, of course, we would have to hire an engineer to do a land development plan. So I guess what I'm suggesting to you today is that there's a big debate about whether we should build new or whether we should try to find an existing building. I don't want us to get bogged down today in one or the other. And I also take as an assumption that all three of us want to do something for the coroner. The preliminary assessment of this particular land tells me that we're gonna find, we're gonna run into more roadblocks that will cause time delays. And that it may be either that if we, if we can't resume negotiations on the existing building that we did identify, that we may want to look at other land for building new. Hopefully, and I'm looking around the room, I don't see, I don't know if the DA is here. Oh, the DA is here. I'm hopeful that if we go and spend money to build new, that we spend money, and I know you, you want to do this, Commissioner, I know you, you've talked about this, that we do it, and I think, I'm sure Commissioner Muster wants to do it too, that we do it with land that will allow us to solve multiple county problems so that we don't have to build just the coroner building. And by the way, here's the other problem with the, with the land there. It's really not enough square footage. Because if in fact, five or eight years from now, we need a forensic center to do autopsies, and we've talked about how if the region grows, instead of, you know, everybody going down to Allentown, we wouldn't have the land, we wouldn't have the space there to do it. We would be boxing ourselves into a very small footprint. So I hope that some of the other folks who are here today, like the DA and the others, could talk about some of the needs that they have. But I guess that I really believe that land is not gonna, is not gonna do anything for us except send us down a rabbit hole that will delay the process. And as I said at the outset, I don't think we want to delay the process. So, so that's something, I'm not gonna dwell on all the other issues because I see there are people in the audience who will probably speak to them. But, and I do think that there's also, by the way, on the existing building with, with Mr. Lundie, that while we had negotiations, we never really got to the point of being able to cut down to some final numbers. There were numbers put back and forth. And in my conversations with him, I get the sense that he's willing to negotiate further on that. So that's something for us to have on the side also, you know, to try to do it. But it would, it would be in an effort to try to solve multiple county problems or to build new, or to build new in an area where we can solve multiple county problems. So I hope that, that we'll consider this before we move out on paying for an appraisal on land. By the way, to the, to the issue, we've discussed the putting Magistrate Fry there and if Magistrate Fry, if we're able to purchase that building, that, of course, we'd want to know what the cost is gonna be to renovate that building because we saw that with Magistrate Solomon's building. We spent up close to a million dollars renovating that building. And again, we might be chasing an older property. There is land in areas where Magistrate Fry could be. So, so those are my, I'm sure I'll have comments later, but that's just some things that I hope that we can think about as a board as we analyze the best way to get this done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner?
Well, I'll, I'll reserve my comments here.
Okay. Corr.
Morning, Commissioners. Good morning. Yes, this has been, as we all know, a ten-year-plus process that we've been going through and I, I certainly applaud your efforts in now trying to move this project forward. It's, it's well overdue. We saw that with the COVID pandemic, you know, it hit us in the face. We struggled for two years trying to manage our operations in less than desirable situations that you're all well aware of. So, and I, first, I want to go back. I watched the video from last week and I want to applaud you for your comment about the fentanyl. The fentanyl is killing our young people. We're at nineteen fentanyl deaths now in the county for this year. We're dealing with this stuff on a regular basis. It's not going away. And so I thank you for raising that awareness. We now have a new drug that's being cut into the fentanyl. It's called Xylazine. It's a horse tranquilizer. Fortunately, well, I don't think we've seen it because our current tox labs can't test for it. So if they have lethal levels of fentanyl in their system, the Xylazine really doesn't matter. So, you know, but we're, we're seeing a significant number of these deaths. My concern from a safety standpoint, and my staff have, you know, approached this with me, is that location at the hospital in the dead of night is not a good location because of too. two blocks from there, we had our first homicide this year. There's been drug issues out of there. We've taken many of decedents out of there on those areas, unfortunately. So I don't think it's a good area for the, and as Commissioner Narvito has already addressed, the other issues with those lots. Chief Deputy Ross and myself went out there, we measured the lots, walked it off, looked at it, it's not big enough. It's just not enough space and then all the other issues that we've gotta contend with. The trucks are 27 feet, trailers are 30 feet, trying to manipulate those units in and out of a building, just our day-to-day operations. The, you know, the other issue is, and I brought in and asked the chiefs over here and the DA to talk about response times. Chief Winder, Chief Dorman, they're out in the farther reaches of the county where we have to go. We don't just service like Humming County residents, we serve, like Humming, we serve Williamsport, we service the whole county. And if we have to drive in in the middle of the night, get to the building, get a vehicle and respond out, that adds significant time to those response times. Chief Winder and Chief Dorman, you know, they're, they're sitting there waiting. And Chief Winder's volunteers, you know, they're dedicated volunteers to do this work, we're struggling keeping. I've got 45-plus years myself as a volunteer in Fire EMS, so I know exactly what it's like to sit and have to wait, wait on whatever resources we need to get there and then still have to be back up and into work in the morning. So I don't think anything we do out in that area, it really delays our response times anywhere in the county. And as all, was already mentioned, I'm in negotiations with Geisinger and the forensic pathology people that we work with on a regular basis about trying to recruit a forensic pathologist. We are going to put one morgue in this facility for doing the work that we do, but if we wanna expand and bring in a pathologist, we're going to need more than one morgue room to operate out of. You can't just do it all in one. Being at the hospital has no value for us, they can't do lab work for us, they can't do anything that really supports our operation. Everything we do gets, the bodies get transported to Allentown for autopsies, the lab work goes out to Steel Fusion Laboratories, Health Network Laboratories, National Medical Services, everything gets sent out. So there is no value for us being at the hospital location. There's much greater value for us being out close to the interstate where we can get a vehicle, jump on the highway and go wherever we're called. I have done some legwork here, I'll give you copies of these. There are some sites available that we can consider. There's more questions to ask, there's, you know, but they are definitely possibilities. One of the things we talked about several years ago was the ground in front of the Kafka Training Center on West Third Street. I stopped there the other morning and again walked that off. I think that's owned by the City of Williamsport, it's owned by Cetacog. And I've made some contacts with them to see if that might be an option there because the other thing that Fire EMS and law enforcement have been asking for, for, I know for 20 years, is a training facility where they could have a classroom to be able to put on training, you know, programs. I'm understanding that River, or the Michael Ross Room and the Ty dot, or the Trade and Transit's facility after January 1 of next year is going to charge $350 an hour to use that facility. I don't see volunteer fire departments doing, using that facility. And I know the coroner's office will no longer be able to use that. We run on a shoestring as far as our budgets go and we can't afford to lay out $3,500 a day to try and run training. So if the ground and the property allowed, it would make sense, I think, to have a classroom, training facility for our first responders to be able to do training in the classroom. And then, you're right there to the Kafka Training Grounds, you can go back and do your pump operations, your rope work, your, you know, your other rescue techniques and stuff that we all have to train, you know, on and get new people trained to do. Would be an ideal place if we could work something out with that. If that doesn't work by size or whatever reasons, there's three other options I've, I've given you to consider if we're going to go that route of building new. And again, all of those are close proximity to the highway, they get us going to where we need to be. So I think that's about all I have. You know, the one thing that was said last week, and I think I have to mention, is this building isn't for me. And I know you said, "I'm not gonna be happy." You know what? It's not about me, it's about the people in this room, it's about the people that let me into office, about the needs of my office to service this community. You know, I've never done, in 22, well, 45 years in this county, I've never done anything for me personally. It's been done for others. As a nurse, as a paramedic, as a coroner, I've never done anything for me. So that really hit a nerve with me, you know, that this is going to make me upset, what should make the taxpayers in the county upset, because I'm trying to do this for them. And 10 years since that feasibility study was done, and we haven't gotten anywhere. I asked Sandy Olson, who's my solicitor, to be here so she can certainly fill in any gaps, but her and I have been together for 40 years, 35 years, you know, as nurses. So that's where I'm at. And if, if any of the folks that are here have any other thoughts, the DA, chiefs, if you guys can speak to any of this, I appreciate your input as well. But thank you.
I have a comment.
Excuse me, one second, the district attorney's coming up. Glad to hear from you after that, ma'am. Yes?
Morning commissioners. Coroner, I wanted to come over and basically lift up some points that I've already brought to the commissioners' attention regarding why I think the coroner's move, our prospective move, would be in the best interest not only of his office, but also the, the DA's office as well as other law enforcement entities. Essentially, you know, we have various offices now that are kinda scattered throughout the county, including the DUI Center that's located at UPMC. We have various central processing centers where individuals are fingerprinted so we can keep tabs on those who are sentenced and/or charged with a crime. To be able to consolidate these various offices under one roof, to me, makes sense from a logistical standpoint, but also potentially from a financial standpoint. I completely appreciate that there's competing interests, but I think in order to make an educated decision, it's important that you hear from the various entities that will potentially benefit from a consolidation. One of the things that this county has tried to do before I came into office, and I have tried to make a push since coming in, we have individuals that are arrested late at night, you know, they're incorrigible, you know, uncooperative, and they need to be arraigned on a felony charge, or maybe even a misdemeanor, you know, if they can't be returned for their safety or safety and welfare of the public. So they need to be taken before a magistrate. Law enforcement has nowhere to drop these individuals and get back to doing what they need to be doing, which is ensure the safety of their communities. So they may have to sit for hours at a time waiting for an MDJ to come on board. And that's not the fault of the MDJ, but they're getting buzzed periodically throughout the night, and it takes time to go through the paperwork, takes time for law enforcement to prepare the paperwork. If we have basically the equivalent of a drunk tank, you know, which are cells that, you know, we would equip with law enforcement personnel, that's gonna give law enforcement the ability to come in, drop these individuals off after having the charge of documents, have them arraigned the next morning. You know, we could, it's just so much more efficient. So by, by housing all of these offices under one roof, and there's other, there's other reasons that I've lifted up that I don't necessarily wanna discuss, you know, in a public forum as far as the ability to move resources under one roof. And I'm not saying that one particular location over another, that's for you gentlemen to debate, but I was a proponent of the, of the Hart Street location because it is easy on, easy off for law enforcement, and it did appear to have the footprint needed and the expansion capabilities that would be able to accommodate not only the needs that I've brought before you previously and again today, but also the coroner and other entities. I know that there's various row officers here, and we're just kinda standing shoulder to shoulder imploring not so much the, what I'm positioning before the commissioners today, but timeliness, as Commissioner Narvito had brought up earlier, it is, it is important. It's very important to the coroner who's, who's worked on this diligently for years, even preceding me coming into office, but also I think the time is ripe, that we can do this for the community, we can do this for law enforcement, but we just need to act, act swiftly. And if the building on Hart Street makes sense, then I would implore you to go that direction. If it's another one, then as long as it's expeditious, let's just please get this done. But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I know you. I know you somewhat. I don't know a lot of you, but as a contractor, as a taxpayer, I know him very well. And I've seen this man, oh, I'm Candy Taylor, RB Taylor Construction. I know the price tag on building refurbishing, and I've watched this man struggle for years. I know that he has been washing some nights his clothes, his truck, at his house. And it has been very sad, you know? I've also been to a lot of these sites, you know, where easy off, easy on. And I know other people who wanted to also be at, you know, the Lundey area and, which would have been, you know, great. But if there's another place, another area that would benefit him, which would be great, but I felt flipped when I heard about High Street and them. I am one that deals with a lot of drug addicts. I've had a gun pointed at me, I've had a knife at my throat, I pack because I work in Williamsport, I'm not from Williamsport, but I for one have to work sadly in Williamsport with a lot of drug addict tenants that I don't put in my rental units, but I manage properties. And it's very scary out there today, especially on High Street, very scary. And you don't know who half of these people are, but I do. And to put something like that on High Street where half the time I have to have eyes in the back of my head, Jim can tell ya, you know, you really have to be careful, you know? And I'm a tough woman, I'm a lady, but then during the day, I gotta be a strong woman. And it, it's not easy in Williamsport anymore, I hate Williamsport, which I used to love Williamsport, but you really gotta be careful. He has to be careful because of everything that's coming into our area. I'm on the board for saving lives for Zachary. And, you know, I'm telling ya, we're, the City of Williamsport's in trouble, you know? And sadly, you people, you may know it, you may not know it, but to hear, to go out of town and hear that, you know, Williamsport is, you know, sadly, one of the corruptest cities around compared to Philly and, and Wilkes-Barre, that's sad to hear that. Little League Williamsport, you know, it's so sad. And I have a lot, my great uncle was the chief of police and he would turn over in his grave. And I'm a Christian woman, but let me tell ya, I tell it like it is. And if people don't like it, that's just too bad, 'cause I am a devoted Christian woman, but I speak my mind. But that man deserves a building after all these years. Us taxpayers, I pay a lot of money, 'cause I have a lot of rental units, and I pay a lot of money in this city, and I'm not even from here. I'm from a little town out in Lardsville, I just happened to marry a man from Lardsville, and that's where I live. But that's what I have to say, and this man deserves, well, and God bless you guys because you, you policemen, you deserve a lot, because I don't honestly know how you can handle it out there today, because you can't. You'll never keep up at the City of Williamsport, not ever. You just can't do it. And it's sad because there's so much going on out there that I pity ya, I really do. So, now you see me out of eye. And Rick? Now you see me out of eye, I talk to your wife a lot.
Ms. Taylor, can I ask you a question? You mentioned that you're in construction.
Yes.
You know, one of the concerns that we have about building a new building, wherever it's located, is that we are concerned that the end of the day, the cost is actually gonna be more per square foot than...
Right now, sir, not to interrupt you, but right now, just in residential, because we do commercial and residential, right now, just in residential, and we really try to do good by people, it's 175 to 200 square footage. Commercial right now, commercial, is like 400 square footage for commercial. You know, we work for Inzingers and, Inzingers, yeah, Inzinger and Klingerman's and right now, you know, we, residential, we try to help like the elderly in Lardsville, we try to help all these people. You know, like right now, we're doing a, a new addition in Loyal Sock. And the cheapest we can go right now is, you know, 175 square foot.
$175, you're mentioning?
Yes.
And on the commercial, $400 per square foot?
Yes.
Right.
But that's, but that's right now.
Right.
Because see, the cost of everything right now, because of the way things are, it's gonna be going up. So, and we tell all our, our clients, "Look, this is what it is right now, but we're gonna lock this in and we may eat a lot of things, but being who we are, you know, this is what it'll be, but as the year, next year comes, you know, but it's, it would be better off to do over a building if you can." You know, and that's why I said that Lundey Building, that, if he offered you, I forget what it was, I thought, wow, that's outstanding for everything that he was willing to give. But to build, you're, you're, you're looking at some high money.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nice to meet you.
You too.
I'll mention one thing I forgot. Northampton County built their facility, they moved in about a year ago. They built a 27,000-square-foot building that cost them over $11 million. And it was about three years in the construction process, it cost them $410 a square foot, and that was finished, as I said, about a year ago.
Chuck, is that, is it for a forensic center?
Yes.
Or the coroner's office?
It's coroner's, it's forensic, all in one, yeah. They have their own pathologists for autopsies, they have...
There's a lot more involved.
Well, it's pretty much the same, the only thing we're cutting out is some of the autopsy rooms until we decide if we're able to get a pathologist here, but we would need the space to add it at some point. It's better to put the piping and the drains and stuff in and have that ready. If we're building new, then to wait and then have to go back and tear up concrete, or if we're, you know, doing a building over, we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. So, but commercial, realist, or commercial construction from, I just did a simple Google search, it's $490 a square foot nationally. National, so.
Chuck?
Yes?
And when you talk about the forensic pathologist discussions with Geisinger, Geisinger would pay for the forensic pathologist?
That's what, I've, I've had multiple coroners, Scott Lynn, who's now the president of the State Coroner's Association, Jeremy Reese, who's the Columbia County coroner, several coroners have been talking to Geisinger, yes, they would bring that person on and supply those services. Now, whether, they don't have the facility adequate at Geisinger to do everything, but if we could do some days here, some days there, then we, we're on a win-win situation. I've also talked to Dr. Maz down at FPA, the Forensic Pathology Group, and about maybe they would provide a pathologist up here. Whether it's part-time or full-time, that would remain to be seen based on what the numbers look like. We've been, you know, 10 years ago, the numbers were showing us about 200 cases a year. We haven't gotten any less busy, I mean, just look at the news media for, you know, all the deaths that we're dealing with, so.
Well, of course, with UPMC becoming a trauma center, we're gonna get more...
We're getting more cases.
Right, that'll be able to be processed, right.
Flown in to here, unfortunately, when traumatic deaths, you know, these folks die, they add additional cases to our workload.
And in that situation, we would actually, so instead of all these counties in the, say, 11 county north central region going down to Allentown, they would bring their cases to us, we would actually be able to bill a reasonable amount for the use of the facility.
There would be probably a facility fee typically, that's, I think, is the way it operates. We pay a facility fee as part of our billings down in Allentown, it'd be the same thing, I'm sure we could work that out here, we're able to get to that point. But again, we need a building to do anything. Without a building, we can't. We just can't do anything.
Final last thing is I know that you solicitors come, I'd be curious to hear her comments, if she has any to...
Comment?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Olson, I'm actually from Tioga County, but Chuck and I have worked together for the last few years.
Yeah.
And I, so I've been following this process kind of peripherally because there really are not legal issues necessarily in the forefront with it. They're, they're just issues that need to be dealt with, with the legislative body. But it, at this point, it just, it seems like we're getting close to getting a resolution and I commend you for talking about it and thank you for giving Chuck the time that, that you have to discuss this over the past, I guess, really a long time. I'm not sure exactly how long you've been discussing it, but I guess I'm having trouble kind of figuring out the direction that you're looking for. I think Chuck, Chuck has tried diligently to research a lot of different options and I feel like I, I'm not sure I know at this point, and this is through him and getting, it's my first meeting with you folks, so I haven't heard from you directly, but I'm having trouble figuring out exactly what it is that we're trying to, I guess what the obstacles are to that and what your, what your feelings are about what we should do. I'm sure you want to do something that's fiscally responsible for the taxpayers. I'm sure that's probably number one. The second thing I would think that you would want to do is meet the needs of, of the county residents who unfortunately require the services of the coroner's office. I've, I've worked with Chuck long enough to watch this office go from, I'm not even sure I would describe it when he first came on board, to probably one of the most professional offices in the state. And he, he's provided leadership to the State Coroner's Association, he has really done a tremendous job improving that and improving the standing of something that's important in a county. So not all counties have coroners that are at the level that this office is. So I guess I, I would ask for some guidance, really, on what your, what your goals are and what you're looking for and how we can best meet that. I feel like that's what we're missing, we're not, I don't know, we're not, we're not connecting for some reason with, with what you would like to see, what you feel you need to be able to make a decision and what Chuck needs to be able to operate his program. So I think that's what's missing from this discussion. So if we could get a little more guidance from you, that would probably be helpful. But again, thank you so much for even talking about it. Like I said, we've been working on this so long, I feel like, gosh, we're this, we're this close. Thank you.
Thank you. Any votes, any comments?
Don't panic.
Hi, Todd.
I'll try to turn my filter on.
Should I get a bulletproof?
For the best. Well, I was a little concerned when I sat all by myself and a cop gets on each side of me and then the DA moves over closer. Jimmy said, do you have your attorney close? And I said, no, it's a scam. So Todd Winder, chief of the Clinton Township Fire Department, and also vice chairman of the Fire Chiefs Association here in Lake Coming County. I've known Chuck since before, I became fire chief back in 1999 and, I forget your name, but as, as she just said, the, the office, the coroner's office was poor, very poor, disrespected, you know, everyone knows the story of past officers in there and stuff, but Chuck has turned this thing around considerably. And from a fire department standpoint, as he said, we get called out, and as Mr. York said, thank you, we get called out anytime of the day and night, any holiday, and when there's a decedent person there, we make the notification to the coroner's office and then we're there. And God forbid it be something like the other day where the body was found in a yard, 300 feet from the school entrance, or 300 yards from the school entrance, it, it just closes things down while we're waiting for them to be able to get there. We've had multiple situations where, because they have lack of access to the roadways and things, where we've had to wait considerable amount of time for them to be able to mobilize and get there. In the daytime, it's not so bad because there are people in their offices, but at night, they're like us, they gotta get called from home, they have to come into somewhere, get their apparatus and respond to our, whatever our situation is to remove that body. Now, you guys know me, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna beat you up, but 10 years, 10 years, they've been trying to figure out what to do with the coroner's office. And you had a location with a temporary, I guess, temporary morgue from FEMA that had to be moved away because of, in my opinion, what comes down to what seems like a pissing match over a building in a location. I ask all, all three of you guys this question, is how long did it take you to give, to decide to give money to the Hyawatha? Days, hours, maybe a week, when you considered this last allocation? 10 years for an essential service for this county that serves every fire department, every community, every law enforcement officer in this county and, and whoever was commissioner over the past 10 years and stuff, we've had Act 13 money, we've now had ARPA money, you know, you, you guys seem to find money for all sorts of things. I mean, there's a beautiful garden out at the county farm that a lot of money from the commissioners have gone into over the years. But the, the coroner's office is struggling to have a location that meets not only just his needs and he's offering to move other row offices, as the DA said, into the same building to consolidate things, you know, you guys, we all know that Bockel, Andy Fulmer's a good friend of mine from Roger McCray, Judge Kemp's office, you know, $1 million plus dollars for that building, that, at the time that that was built. And that, and I'm not faulting any of you guys, it was before your time, but that was just kind of ridiculous. This thing should not go another month where you don't have this plan in place. That building over there was functional, was workable. As Mr. Mirabeeto said, you don't, you didn't get to a final, what's my drop dead, what's my bottom line cost of that building? And I just think that locate, I've offered our location, I've offered to Chuck 10, 12 years ago, I said, we got ground behind the fire hall, we'll build the suit. But we're in the armpit of the county way down there, it, it again causes the same problem where Gerald Ross lives in Jersey Shore, Saudisburg area, so he'd have to come clear to Clinton Township to maybe get the truck and go clear back to Jersey Shore or up to Waterville. So a centralized location, close to the interstate, close to Route 15, just makes sense. It doesn't make sense to put it downtown through red lights, up near the hospital. Just getting to the hospital in ambulance in an emergency is a mess. It's, the, the streets are poor, the streets get worse the closer you get to the hospital. It, it just, it just, none of it makes sense, guys. But honestly, ask yourselves, for 10 years, this board, not necessarily you people individually, but for 10 years, this board has had a feasibility study that says the coroner needs a better location, a better facility, and it hasn't happened. But yet, the Hyawatha, and I agree with you, the thing is, is very nice, it's, it's a wonderful attraction to have here, but you'll throw money at that and money goes to the airport, money goes to this, I can name 100,000 things that we give money to and they're probably all very justifiable. But the coroner is an essential service and we're screwing around, trying to keep the filter going, we're screwing around not getting this done. And, and there's, there's really no excuse for it. You know, you guys are better than this, let, let's figure it out. You know, if you can put DA's office, like he said, and that sort of stuff in a location in that building and keep everything together and combine services like you talk about with the fire service, we've had many discussions, you guys want to see regional efforts, you want to see people collaborating, working together, and that's taken effect, it's starting to take place in this county, but yet it's almost like you guys don't want it to happen with your, your own offices. You know, you have the perfect opportunity here to lead by example and get a lot of things under one roof that's going to make it better for operations of everybody involved and we can't come up with it. So I implore you guys, it's been 10 years, you, you had a place that was functioning, granted the rent, I, I understand, I do construction, $400 is awfully cheap, talk to the Geister-Muncie Fire Department about the cost for overruns in their building, from the engineer till their building right now, and it's, it's going to cost them a ridiculous amount of money over and above what they thought. So building to me is not the answer. The renovation is, in a building that's already existing, it only makes sense for that location. And I, I would implore you to take a second look at it and really get down and dirty with Mr. Lundie or whomever it is and say, let, we need to work this out and figure out a place to get this done and get them into a home before it gets much worse with the weather. You know, this pandemic can come back and bite us tomorrow, we don't know if it's over. I like to think that it's hopefully out of, off, off the radar, but you know, what's going to hit us next? And when you have bodies piling up, which they did, we literally took bodies into the morgue in our ambulance because they didn't have vehicles available during the pandemic. So we transported dead bodies and we don't do that, but we did it because of our relationship with Chuck and we knew that they were strapped, so we did it. And we'll continue to do that, but I, I implore you gentlemen to figure this thing out. This should not go, it should not go another several months before you have an answer on this. It's been, it's been 10 years. Let's do something, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Thank you. Can you state your name too, please? Thank you. Thank you for being here.
My name is Jim Carey. Unlike Candy, I love this city. I've been here 40 years. I've lived out of the country, worked out of the country, I've lived in six states my whole life, 57 years, and you know, it's got such history here. First of all, I have two wishes, one, Hyawatha, thank you for approving, you know, because there isn't that much to do here. I mean, we've got such great history, there's a lot of things to do, but as far as like, anytime someone comes here, I take them on the Hyawatha. I'm out of town, like my cousins in, or my nephew's in from Asia, I took her on in this summer. They had a buffet poker tournament on there, it was such a great time, a couple of times before the pandemic, they haven't since, but it, it is an asset for us, you know? As far as the corner, this just came on as I was thinking about it, there wasn't any talk about it, but I've always considered like this is the big city within like an hour and 15 minutes. You got State College, you got Wilkes-Barre, you gotta go down to Harrisburg. You said there's 11 counties that, in this area. There's, I have a degree in business and I'm, I'm hearing this and I'm saying, well, we're talking about even though only half of those people decided not to go to Allentown anymore, we're talking about a profit center, you know? If the people, see, and I don't know how many autopsies are done, you know, that kind of stuff, but actually, we could be the, instead of people going to Allentown, we could be the ones that are doing it. We're the big city within an hour and a half. So we could turn into something that actually is a profit center for our county and a positive thing with all the other things about the drunk tank and the training, you know? I used to sell fire equipment for Samsung Fire Sales 30 years ago and we, we used to use MAMA, the fire, and I think they'll still do that, but there could be something here that does the police and the fire and all the training. So that was my input. Make sure...
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes? Make sure you have your filter on for sure.
Hi, I'm Jeff Green, I'm the Lairdsville Police Chief and President of the Law Enforcement Association from Lake Coming County. And a few things I'd like to address would be, I would say to the access, I know we have an early community, so we have inspired people. Generally, sometimes the ambulance can stay, we have volunteers and there's the paid crew, they, they have other calls and the ALS, they don't stick around. A lot of times we're stuck. Sometimes it's a half hour, some, I was there one, one time, they were tied up on, they were tied up on another call, so we had to wait for like an hour and a half, so, and I was there by myself, so I did have a good conversation and the person listened the whole time, so it worked out well for me. But it does take, it does, it does, it would be quicker for somebody speedier, we get back, their paperwork done, get back out of control. As far as the training and stuff, you know, obviously we're losing our ability to use the Trade Transit Center, that is a huge number to have training for one day. I know we considered the National Guard's building, we've used that before, but sometimes when we have these events and what's, what's been really nice for us is Williamsport Police has a guy who will coordinate training. So a lot of us have, police-wise, we have budgets for training, but the budgets will cover, okay, the training might be, I'll give you an example, I sent a guy, our firearms guy, it cost me $500 for the training, that's what my line item goes, $500. It cost me $1,800 for motel fee for a week and meals for him to go there, which has to be taken out of another budget. So the old days, hey, wherever the training was, you went. Now lately, I mean, the last 15, 20 years, the money's tight, so it is nice that we coordinate, or the city will coordinate some training and then put it out there, everybody, and then all we have to do is come up here, it's a two-day course, we just go home, doesn't cost any meals, doesn't cost any, a hotel accommodation. So if something could happen there, I think it would probably be big enough that it would be probably bigger than what the National Guard, I think at one point we used the gymnasium, I think, for one point, drug chairs out and everything else just to have a training. I think that would alleviate that problem and it would benefit obviously all the law enforcement and surrounding counties, because a lot of them come from other counties to do some of the training. The third thing is, is the magistrate would move in there and have everything there. I don't know what the number is, but we all get emails, I'm sure the DA knows, is we, I get a list of people that haven't been, of each department, who hasn't been fingerprinted yet. And beyond our control, because God knows, we're arresting the crap out of people, but they're not going where they're supposed to be. So you get summons in the mail, it's not my responsibility to go get fingerprinted. And apparently there's no rule of kernel procedure that can tell you to go get fingerprinted before your preliminary hearing, and once you're charged, you're required to get fingerprinted. And I would think, just talking with the DA, is that the magistrate that would move in there is probably the busiest in the city. So I know that ours is DJ White, and when we go out there, hey, can you go, at the preliminary hearing, can you go fingerprint that guy? Can you take him out there? You want to help, but you send him a summons in the mail, he's there, he's not my custody, it's not my respons, it's any responsibility to go get fingerprinted. The fact that he didn't before the preliminary hearing, how does it become our responsibility now to Uber you over to get fingerprinted? That's, that's your problem. So I think with that magistrate being in there and being the busiest magistrate in this city, if you have people that don't want to obey that and they have their preliminary hearing right there, well, central processing's in the same building, so the first thing you're going to do after your hearing is you're going to go and get fingerprinted and that'll eliminate that. Because I know when I look down through the list, because they're, they're 50, 50 summon the police up there, so that's, obviously they're going to arrest more people, so when I see people who haven't been fingerprinted, a majority of them are city police, because of just by volume, by numbers. So that would, that would certainly cut down the percentage of those people and obviously if we could, except you can make it where they would be required before they would show up for the hearing, that'd be great. Now, we arraign people and take them before the magistrate and they're committed to prison, yeah, we have to meet, exterminate a day and stuff, we'll fingerprint them or use this after hours, we'll use the, the state police and things like that. I don't know what would change there, but I know like, even though Lake Coming or where it's going to be in DuBois Town, which is going to be South Williamsport, who's covering that, we have to realize is the people that are working the fingerprint, aside from, I think Joe Hope, they're not law enforcement. So if you come in there on a DUI, you just got, you set up an appointment to get fingerprinted, they, they, that system checks you for warrants, warrants, and if you turn up your wanted, there's, they have to call either South Williamsport or, or Lake Coming's got to go in and take control of what's going on. If you're wanted from another county, you might have to go type up a fugitive from justice warrant, you know, before, so you're tying a guy up, it's not even their problem, it's just because the center gave you the... So there's multiple things that, it would really solve if you could put everything in one spot. Now, now it's a dollar figure. Now, now for the dollar figure, I don't, I don't, you know, I've watched some of the meetings you guys have had, I don't know what, could it be at least, could it be at least a home? I don't know how that looks out, I don't know what the final cost, the dollar figure would be for you to move into a, what did you say it was, twenty-four, twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Versus what, a twelve thousand square foot?
I think you're saying.
What a twelve thousand square foot building would be, the cost difference in percentage, but once you get those in there, obviously you have, I think you'd have several tenants that would be, you know, magistrate, they would be paying, that would be paying rent to offset that. That's where you guys come in as to what the actual number is, but I guess what you have to look at is, what's your bankroll, what are you getting for what you're paying? And you're getting the full package if it goes in there, that's what you're getting.
Chief, I want to, if there's no one else, I want to address a couple of things you raised, okay? So the people understand, the Lundey negotiations are not concluded, okay? And what it would require us to do would be to lease the building for a certain amount of time and then pay a purchase price at a certain point. The, the problem we have is that we don't want a lease that has no conclusion where we own it, because we don't want to improve a building that we don't own. So we can structure a transaction where we are paying lease payments for a certain amount of time, and during that time, we are building out space for the, for the magistrate Frye, whose lease ends next May 2023. The lease with Housing and Urban Development, with the, the Housing Authority ends in May of 2023. They have said they will continue on a month-to-month basis as we need it. And they have said that they're happy to lease it to us or to sell it to us. But it's obviously a very old building to buy, Magistrate Frye's building, there's been problems in the basement and everything. And, and frankly, at a certain point in the conversation I had with them, when the building is putting them in an upside-down position, meaning that they having to spend money to keep the building intact, they have to get rid of it, because the federal government is not in the place of, it's owned by the federal government, by, by Housing and Urban Development. So we, we need a solution. One of the things that I've come to realize in the last year, because I've been here for seven years and I've not signed a document giving the coroner a home, so I take responsibility for that. And I think that part of it was that when I first came on board, you know, when you become a commissioner, there's a, there's a learning period. But when I came on board, I want, I didn't want us to get into an open-ended lease, where we just leased and leased and leased, because that's what we did at the Sharwell Building. We've been leasing it at almost half a million dollars a year now, forty-two thousand a month. And in the last ten years we've spent, or twelve years, we've spent twelve million dollars. Every year, two years, we spend a million dollars to lease that building. So I didn't want it, but I also have come to a realization in the last year or so that by focusing on building new, we are not dealing with a current problem. Think about that for a minute. By focusing on building new, we are not dealing with a current problem. In other words, if I need to get from here to Harrisburg and I don't want to lease a car, I say I'm going to build a car, right? I'm not dealing with a current problem. And what you described are all current problems. And so what I've come to realize is that part of our responsibility, and Chief Winder pointed out, that we spend money on things, the golf course, we have spent.
Commissioner, you said you had some questions?
No, no, I have, no, I have a right to speak and I'm exercising it, okay? So, so, so Chief, to answer your question, we would be meeting a current need in a lease that gives us what's called a condition precedent. In other words, you, you, you own it, you moved from leasing to owning it. And we can do that. And we can do it to comply with the law. The law says that we can't lease for more than fair market value, and the law says we cannot buy for more than fair market value. But we can lease for X amount of time and put out to bid the things we need. I just want the public to understand the intricacies so that it isn't just glossed over as it's too expensive to do it. It's a decision that we make as policymakers as to where to spend county money. That's the point that Chief Winder was making, that's the point you're making. And what I hear from a lot of people who are engaged in a day-to-day basis is it would help them and would facilitate them getting their job done, whether it's fingerprinting, whether it's the DUI, the drunk tank. So that's all, and no, no offense when I said that, I just, I just want the public to understand that there is a solution. We have to have the political will to make the decision. What I hear from the community is they're okay with us spending public money to lease a building and they're okay with us spending money to buy a building. In fact, they're telling me do it. They're telling me do it. So I think we need to define the political way to get over that and to get, and by the way, listen, Don Lundey is obviously a private businessman, and this is no aspersion to him, he's going to try to negotiate the best deal. Our job is to negotiate the best deal for the taxpayers, but our job is to also understand that dealing with a current problem in the current moment is what our challenge is. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions for?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
So I've been here 11 years and went through a number of purchases and sales. And the two, two purchases that I went through, and one of them's Kemp's office, catastrophe, to say the least. Not, not as it was being planned and formed, right? We bought two acres of land for $167,000, sold one for half, we got, we got a nice deal on the land. We thought we got a good deal on the, on the building of $196,000 until it was a, when they brought it in, it was a trailer, right? But it did meet the neighborhood, right? We, we bought another DJ's building on Lake County Creek, only to find out it was in a floodplain and we needed $150,000 for it. This county has no good record of purchasing anything, including the $13.8 million building that was appraised at $7 million two years before it was bought for $13.8. So, with that being said, Chuck, I don't believe there is ever a time that you came up to us to request anything from us, whether it's personnel, increase of pay, or anything, that we refused you, because we have respect for you. We, we know your history here in Lake County and, and all your allies, okay? You worked hard, you deserve that respect, and, and I would show you no disrespect. I have to, I have to explain this. We had been negotiating with Lundey for a number of months, maybe a year or more, I don't, I don't know.
Year and a half.
But somebody's not getting the point as we can't do this legally, period. Okay, I don't know where this confusion is coming from, but I'll say this. Chuck, I, you don't want it there at the hospital, it's over, done, I don't care. But don't come to me and ask me to, to sign a lease with Lundey for $14 to $16 a square foot. That's anywhere for, for a 10-year lease, which will be somewhere around 3.7 to 4.3 million dollars over a 10-year lease, right? We'll put another 4 million in it to accommodate whoever, you know, whether it's a central processing, that, that I'm a huge advocate for, for the past 11 years, okay? But come to us then, after we put the 4 million in it, spend the 4 million for it in the lease, and then we're going to have to buy it, right? It's a pig. It's a metal building. Go buy it, drive by it. I would, I, I would, I'd be so upset if I purchased this building only for 10 years to see that it still looks like a metal shed. There's no, nothing nice about that building at all. I'll put a Band-Aid on a pig and it'll still be a pig and have all that money wrapped up. I'm listening to the people. If it's $600 a square foot, we'll build it, all right? I, I don't care. It is the vision, it's what you want, it's not what I want. But if the cost is that high, then we, we spend the money. If it's lower, great, okay? You choose the place, but please, don't tell me to, to choose Arch Street. I'm not doing it. I'm not doing it at that cost. I, I refuse to do it and, and now I'll move on to something else. As far as, as far as the timeframe to put something together, buying, buying land and having a building, you know, just two good examples. They build a hospital in two years. Geisinger. They build a bank in nine months, right? Brand new. There were issues, trust me. You know, they built a music center in less than a year. So they had land development, they had everything. So that's no excuse. We'll get you, we'll get you in wherever you need to go. But please, don't ask me to buy the Lundey building or lease it. There's no possible way I would vote for that. And I think I've made that perfectly clear for, ever since we looked at it. So if you don't want that, I will not vote to have those appraised, that not, that we need a vote. I want to praise them. Let's go find another place.
I want to point out, Commissioner, you signed the 10-year lease with Alvarano to lease that building.
Does that have to do with this?
It has to do, you will not lease a building for a emergency services, but you'll pay half a million dollars a year to a developer for office space. The, the, we put a million dollars into the East End City Project, the lease that, that the developer is having with the hospital is $25 a square foot for the building that we put a million dollars into, for the developer to build a building in Old City that's going to turn it around and get leased to the hospital at $25 a square foot. We don't need three votes to pass this, we need two votes to pass it. We don't need a 3-0 vote.
To pass what?
To have us move into the, continue negotiations with Lundey building, come to a conclusion that meets the needs now, not two years from now. So I don't, we don't need a third vote. We need two commissioners who say, listen, and by the way, the idea that it's a pig, a metal building, that is true, it is a metal building, okay? But I have talked to people who were involved in overseeing the construction of the building, separate from Lundey, and they have told me that the building is, is one of the most solid, well-built buildings in the area and that.
It's built for a garage?
Well, all right, I don't, I don't want to get into, and I don't want to pay $600 a square foot. So you go on record as saying that you're not going to vote for that, I'll go on record and I'm not going to waste the taxpayers' money paying $600 a square foot when I can buy a building and lease it at less and solve a problem today, not two years from now.
And I have to comment, you can call it a metal building, and it is, but that building is insulated, we were in there for two winters, I had vehicles I could decontaminate in there, I could keep them in and out of the, the cold, I don't have to go out and scrape ice, jump start trucks, I could wash blood and bodily fluids out and not have those vehicles sitting out in the elements, not taking stuff home and washing it in our laundry, we still have to do that, because we don't have a laundry facility anywhere. But that building, it has drains in the floors, it has a fully sprinklered system in there. I know, I was on the building committee at Old Lake County Fire Department back in eighteen, or 1988, eighteen, long time ago. But I was on the building committee and one of the things we took out of the fire department was the sprinkler system, because it was too expensive. That building has it. It has natural gas, it's got heat, it's got the water, it's got everything that we need. I am not saying we need the Taj Mahal of buildings, I'm just saying we need a building and we've needed it for 10 years. You know, this is crazy that vehicles are purchased and they have to be sitting out in the elements, being exposed, and we still have to, we're getting exposed to COVID. It's just by the grace of God that none of my staff ended up sick or dead, because before COVID vaccines came out, we were exposed. We had a cooler in the morgue that was packed full of COVID bodies, we had to handle them. We picked, went out to death scenes, we didn't know what the, the cause of these individuals' deaths were, until we got the testing back. And again, send it out, wait for days, weeks for the tests to come back. I don't, you know, yeah, I, I'm trying to be as frugal, anyone in this county knows, I'm as frugal as possible, you know? And I can't see spending $600 a square foot if we can do it for half of that. And you had already said we can build a building for $300 a square foot. You've heard it from the construction people, the people down at Lehigh, or I'm sorry, Northampton County spent $410 a square foot back when they built their building, you know, several years ago, and they moved in a year ago. So I, I don't care how we get it done, but let's get it done. You know, I, it's just, it's, it's way overdue, you know? We've never kicked the can down the road for so long on so many, this project, the way it's been, so.
I want to reiterate, 3.7 million to 4.3 million in 10-year lease. 4 million, at least 4 million, to get it to where it needs to be if we're going to use it for multi-purposes, okay? So that could be as high as eight. And then to repurchase it for another four or five or whatever it is, I don't know. I don't know. But that's $13 million.
And that's a misrepresentation.
Well, I, what, what?
That is a misrepresentation. The goal is not to do a lease that results in 3.7 million to 4.3 million, that is not. And then to pay 4.3 million, that is not what I've described. What I've described is taking the fair market value of the appraisal and taking a fair market lease agreement and working out an arrangement.
That's 3.8, that's 3.8 million.
No.
The appraisal is 1.7, by the way.
No, I'm talking about the total being, being less than 4.3.
The appraisal is 1.7 million dollars, not 3.8.
There's one appraisal at 1.9 and there's one appraisal at 4.3. And the point is that to work and negotiate a deal where we get.
I'll show you, I'll show you the appraisals.
I have them.
I can show them.
I've been more involved in this project than anybody.
Yes.
Mr. Lundey just told me.
Well, listen, I didn't say you weren't involved. I said, don't tell me I need to see the appraisals, I've seen the appraisals.
Mr. Lundey told me just recently, he would be all-in with the le, combined lease, build out and ownership at 4.3 million. So that's billed out.
He can't guarantee that any longer, Chuck. You heard him say that.
Well, no, that's not what he told me.
Well, he told us that.
So, and I, you know, I have not been part of, because you guys do your discussions with Don Lundey without me involved. So I don't know what's been said between you folks.
You were the one, you were there the time we had the conversation.
But I have talked to him over and over and over. You know, he calls me up and we've had numerous conversations and that's what he's told me. So if he's, you're telling me he's lying, I.
I don't know. I'm not saying he's, he's lying, I didn't say that.
Well, I don't know what.
That's the point why we need to try to reengage and see if we can find a solution, Commissioner Metzger, that comes.
Does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, I'm going to speak at this point. When I ran for office, I talked about this. I did my career in probation, but I came from a building family. I'm in, I'm, I am a businessman. I have a family business for the last 83 years. We've been successful in the building and rental and construction field. Candy, you're absolutely right about the prices. I talk to contractors weekly to maintain my properties. We looked expansion in other ways, my, my family business, that both sheriffs know, or both commissioners know about. Where, I don't make bad business deals. And I almost made one back in 2006, where I was going to make a big business deal and at the last minute I looked at the numbers and said, it didn't make sense, and I didn't do it. I bring that knowledge to this board. I talk to contractors, I talk to people about retrofits, I talk to local construction people, developers in our area. And I'm passionate about this because you are an outstanding coroner. I've said that from day one. I worked for the county when we had that nightmare of a conviction of a coroner. I have never questioned your, your integrity, your credentials, ever, ever. You have an outstanding staff.
You have an outstanding staff. But the reality of this project, it's gone on way too long. I've been here three years, 11-7. My wife says, you're going to kill yourself trying to get this done. She sees how this affects me. It affects you, it affects me. It affects your workers back there, it affects me.
I disagree.
I don't want you going to a car wash doing that nonsense. It's wrong. That's why I get passionate about it. I have went on every building that you've asked me to go out on. Some, I scratch my head, why are we here? This isn't what we need. Now, to address certain issues. I heard the word delay the process. Delay the process was mentioned here today several times. I am not delaying the process. I got elected to get things done, and we're getting some things done. This is not one of them. And we go around in different directions, and we look at this building, we look at that building, and you talk about land here and land there. And there's direction all over the place. The problem with this situation is none of us are going to be here in 20 years or 30 years. But that building will be. And there will be a new coroner and new coroner staff. And they're going to live in different parts of the county. They're not going to live in one specific area of the county. So the response time is going to take just as long. I went up to High Street. Now, granted, a lot of your staff works, lives in the western end of the county. And you've made, you've made a comment to me on 11 o'clock on the phone that you want to near your staff because they can get there quicker. You said that, Chuck.
Response time needs to be, they need to be able to get to a, just like Chief Winder said, we need to be able to get there and get out.
Okay. But what happens if you get a staff member that lives in the other end of the county? Okay? What better thing to respond to the central part of that county? You just gave us locations, Candy? He just gave us locations in Williamsport, West Third Street, West Fourth Street.
Right next to the highway, the interstate, Ridge Road and the highway.
But hang on, they're in Williamsport. You want to talk, there's crime throughout the entire county, Chuck.
Not like out here. Not like, Steve Johnson himself said.
Please let me speak. You had a chance to speak. I'm not going to argue with you, Chuck. I want to help you. I'm not going to argue with anybody. But these are all locations in Williamsport. We're not putting you in Unionville. We're not putting you in Waterville. We're putting you in the center part of the city. Most of the properties we looked at have been in the city. There's crime throughout the city. There's crime throughout the county, okay? Where the Lundie Building is, less than a mile from there, about a mile, there was a double homicide on Halloween a few years ago. It happens around the vicinity. When we went to look at the Lundie Center, or Lundie Building, not Lundie Center, Lundie Building, I was all for it. I'm the one that suggested a multi-use. That was my idea. Because I saw the need of the DA's office. I saw the need of central processing company there. I wanted it to happen. He's right, he didn't want it to happen because he saw the numbers. I worked with him extensively trying to get this done. I changed my mind when I realized the numbers do not fit financially. We can't pay more for a building than what an appraisal is. That's the law. And I am not going to get into another lease. First, it went from three years to five years. Now we're up to 10 years. My name is on that lease down at the Sharwell Building. I would have never signed that one. And I'm not about to sign something like this either. We rented that building for you to be in there. And we're about $100,000 already. That's why we asked you to pull it out. When we heard that you weren't really utilizing it to its fullest capacity, that was kind of like a backup, that was costing the taxpayers almost 100 grand. That's why we asked you to pull it out, put it someplace else. We could have found a cheaper location for you to do that than what we, what we found out was being paid. So that's why we asked you to pull it out. Mr. Lundie owns that building. Him and his family have every right to ask what they want for it, okay? But I've talked to developers. They say, do not retrofit a coroner or a central processing center or something into a building. Build it new. Make it, make it according to their needs. We saw this with your truck out here. You're trying to retrofit things already on your truck, and you said it just isn't quite right. Build to spec. So it meets your needs. I want to meet your needs. Not with, I don't want to meet your wants. We all want a lot of stuff, but I want to meet your needs. I went to High Street. I drove from High Street to 180 twice this past weekend. It took me three minutes. Three minutes to get on 180. Three red lights. Hit one the one time, hit two the other time. It took me three minutes. That neighborhood, yeah, granted, there's things you got to move, utilities such like that, land development plans. Wherever we build, we're going to see that. And I'm not saying I'm sold on this idea, but you've been going to the morgue across the street for 20 years. Why not be across the street? If that neighborhood is good enough for a church to build, that neighborhood good enough for the Board of Directors of the YMCA to build a multimillion-dollar facility in that neighborhood where their customers walk to their cars all hours of night and day because it's a 24/7 facility, and EMS office that the hospital built is right next door. But they went in it, and I talked to them. And they say, we come and walk to our car at night. Granted, we have security cameras, we have lights, but also with, please, Chuck, please. The thing about this building, wherever we build it, you drive into a garage. It's lit up, there's cameras. You drive into the garage like a Sally Port, and you close the door behind you. It's secure, it's safe. And if it means that we want to put on the additional, I have no problem with doing central processing and DUI center in the same location. The hospital picked out those lots specifically because we told them we needed about 12,000 square feet. They gave us that section. We could talk to them about, there is so much land around there, it's unbelievable. If we could go back and talk to them and say, listen, we want to add on central processing, we want to add on the DUI center along with the coroner, we want to put the drunk tank there, and we want to build this there, I'm sure they would talk to us about some additional with land there or maybe move it over a couple lots. But when we said, you were then meeting, we didn't exclude you. We said 10, about 12,000 square feet. That's where they put. We can have a discussion with them. But I agree, Todd, this has to get done, okay? But from, we're responsible for the finances of the county. And I agree with Commissioner Massar, where I don't want to dump millions and millions and millions of dollars in something that we don't own. And we have to pay prevailing wage. Prevaling wage. And I'm not going to compare this constantly. I constantly hear about the Hiawatha, the golf course, all this stuff. We've set $3.5 million aside for you. It's in the budget for next year. You know that. This isn't about, we're spending money on something else so you don't get your stuff done, okay? Those people come to us with their ideas and their projects. We either fund it or we don't. I don't want to enter another lease where it doesn't make sense, or it just does not make sense. And we haven't been able to do that for 18 months. We've went back and forth and back and forth. And it's not worth, that lease isn't worth the value of what we're going to put in there. But we can build it from spec, brand-new, according to what you need, not what your wants are, what you need, what the DA's office needs, what central processing needs, and make it a state-run, a perfect facility. And he's right. This county has a terrible track record with buildings. I'm not going to put my name on one of those. It's not going to happen. Thank God we came in on their, just slightly on their budget with Solomon, even with the firewall. So yes, we need to get this done. I'll go look at this other land with you. It's all Williamsport. I don't know how, you know, these lots, we, I'm a businessman. These lots, we can get at a very reasonable price because of the location. Compared to going to someplace else in the county, the lots are going to be a lot more, a lot more.
We don't know that yet.
I can assure you that, Chuck.
Well, one is the city of Williamsport, so we need to have discussions with that.
So we'll continue these conversations. I have spent so much time on this, it's unbelievable. And you know this, Chuck, I've called you 11 o'clock at night, I've called you on vacation. I've tried to work with you on this. We are not going to be at opposite sides on stuff. We have to work together. But I can't buy excuses about that because of the distance, because the distance is, we're not going from one end of Philadelphia to the other Philadelphia, through 16 traffic lights and traffic. And your staff is going to change over the years, and you're going to, not going to be there. So that building will be there. Whoever responds to that building, it'll be centralized. That's my focus, to have it centralized. Not at one end of the county or the other.
I agree, it needs to be centralized, but I think it needs to be centralized near the highway. It does add time, depending on traffic issues.
Chuck.
Chief Winder said just an ambulance coming into.
Twice, twice. Friday afternoon and Sunday afternoon. Friday afternoon during business time. 4:30 in the afternoon took me three minutes.
Mr. Metzger, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Because I want to know where we're at. If a Lundie agreement was possible to be put together in a combination lease and purchase for under the $4.3 million, would you be open to that?
I have to look at the figures, I have to look at the numbers.
But, but you understand what I'm saying, right? That the cost of the lease, and not a 10-year lease, I concur, but the cost of the lease and the purchase payment would be under 4.3.
We have prevailing wage, yeah?
No, no, that has to do with.
That's been, that's been one of the main issues, Commissioner.
No, I know, but that has to do with the renovations.
Let me finish. Yeah, the renovations. But the person who owns the building wants to do the renovations. And we can't just let him do that if we buy the building. It has to go out for bid.
Absolutely.
That's the law.
Okay, Commissioner, I understand what I'm asking you. The renovations are separate. None of us wants to put, make improvements to a building that we don't own. If we can find a legal vehicle that allows us to lease and purchase, the renovations are going to be separate. The renovations, whether they, you know, the.
Renovation costs are extremely high rate now.
I understand that.
They're being near what.
I understand that. But, but my point is that if we can find a solution that comes with a lease and a lump-sum payment that's under it, would you be amenable to looking at that?
I will look at numbers.
Okay. Because I want to see if we can put together an agreement like that.
I base my decisions based on numbers and whether it's financially sound or not.
Well, so what I'm describing is not a $13 million investment. What I'm describing is a lease and a purchase payment, almost like a lease-to-own, that gives us the legal rights to make changes to the building and allow, and ensures that we own it, and it gives us immediate use. So as Chief Winder said, we're in there immediately. And then we start to build out what we need. And all that build-out, some of it could be done by our own people, some of it could be bid out.
I, I would be careful how you say that right now because we have, our maintenance people are stretched extremely thin.
Right.
And they have expressed to us they can't take on any more projects because they're working on a sheriff's office that is two and a half years behind schedule.
No, I understand that. And maybe some of that stuff needs to be bid out, but whatever. Whatever happens, it's going to, we're going to have to get outside help to do it, and we're going to have to spend some money to get an immediate need met. That's my point. But I'm glad to hear you're open to looking at those numbers.
I'm open to everything.
And I'll try to see if I can find a vehicle to put that together.
I base my decision exactly what this listener said. I look at the fiscal responsibility, whether it makes sense for this county and what his needs are, not what his wants are, what his needs are, and what the DA's office needs are. We get a want list all the time. We try to satisfy the needs.
Sandy, I want to thank you for.
Yes, thank you for being here. Appreciate you.
My pleasure.
Yes.
Finally meet you.
Does that help clarify where we're going?
I think a little bit. I think we need some more discussion.
Yes.
Perhaps not in this kind of a setting.
Yes? That'd be very good. Thank you.
That's good advice.
Okay. Public comment at this time?
Yay!
We have public comment, yes. Commissioner, can you read what's online after that?
Good beep at just the right time. Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street, Williamsport.
Good morning, Scott.
Not to sidestep what I came here to speak about, but one of the things, I'm from Maryland. And in Maryland, the county owns the schools. Whereas here, the school and the county are completely separate. And so it gets me that Sheridan Elementary, Round Hills Elementary, and I think it's Woodward Elementary were sold four or five years ago for like under half a million dollars. And the whole thing I'm thinking about is, gosh, that Woodward Elementary, I remember seeing it for lease plus the 26 acres of land. I don't know how much land he needs. But for half a million dollars, you could have gotten that right there on the highway with 26 acres of land and built whatever, in God's name, this man needs to do his job to the best of his abilities and whatever else anybody wants. But that's just me thinking, you know, like you said, build new, you know? And I don't know that the elementary school would have served any purposes, but it gets me. The reason I'm here, though, the reason I came, and got a parking ticket, I'm sure by now.
Sorry about that.
When the government denies you the use, pleasure, and service of your property, you're entitled to be compensated for it. This is my house cellphone because it's the cheapest option I can find. But when they send out the Amber Alerts at midnight the other night, it woke me up. I have to get dressed, go downstairs, and I have to push the stinking button to stop it from doing that like they did today. I don't want the Amber Alerts anymore because I don't like being woken up at midnight. I don't like having to get dressed and walk downstairs at midnight. It Bluetooths to my house phones, but I can't Bluetooth back to tell it, shut up. And so I don't know who in government says, okay, stop harassing Scott with the Amber Alerts because I'm sorry, you know, I wasn't down in Bucks County. I wasn't on the interstate and sitting next to my phone base and my internet thing, so.
You can go to settings, I think, and take. Go to settings and shut off Amber Alert.
I'm sorry, I'm not a technological person. I have no idea how to do it. My last cellphone I had before this one, after three years, it pocket dialed to the volume so I could turn the volume on. Yes, he just volunteered.
I'll send you to RIT Department.
This morning, today's Amber Alert that they issued, it started screaming out of the phone for me to, come pick me up. I want your attention, I want your attention. You know, it wasn't just the little bleep that y'all are hearing. It was, you know, a voice coming out of the phone. I purp- I purposely didn't touch it so y'all could be annoyed for a little while and I muffled it under my hat and coat so it wouldn't disturb the meeting too much. But y'all have been hearing this, I'm sure, throughout the meeting. I'm sorry about that, but I'm sorry, you know, it's just.
Have you, how would it have been your neighbor's child? Would you have appreciated the Amber Alert?
If it was my child. Yes, I, I understand the Amber Alert, but when you have to get up out of bed to go turn it off, say I got up out of bed and then couldn't go back to sleep and then I couldn't go to work in the morning because I'm asleep, you know? And there's a point where it's like, really? You know? And I could turn off my phone every night, but then like when my sister had to go to the hospital a couple of years ago, I wouldn't be able to get the call or the text at 11 o'clock at night, hey, I'm on my way to the ER, you know?
You know, sometimes those things are inconvenient, but at certain times people have to be notified, emergencies, and obviously an Amber Alert is probably the biggest emergency we have in this.
I, I get that, but you know, it was from, I don't even know where Bucks County is, sorry, but you know, I don't even know where Bucks County is, you know?
But that person could be also heading in this direction and you could be the hero that saves that little one.
Somehow they have to make it where like, you know, my phone moves so like, you know, if I run the road, it goes to another tower. Yeah, I don't know. It doesn't, you know, like when I had a house phone, wired, wired house phone, I didn't get the Amber Alerts. My TV screens.
No, they tell marketers.
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, this gets them too.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Sorry to take more than my three minutes and let me go over to the volunteer.
We missed you. Yeah. Good seeing you. All right, so what do you, what do you have?
I have no idea.
Okay, we have, uh, three.
Yes.
Online. One's calling me out, so we won't read that one.
No, I'll read it.
Saving lives for Zachary, the hardest working nurse, coroner I know. Jeff will try. Our county coroner's office should receive top-of-the-line infrastructure. Third one, Jeff will try. For the record, the new music building took over three years of planning and implementation, not under a year, as Commissioner Masser stated.
All right, so meeting, we've completed the meeting, we've, uh, completed the agenda, so meeting will be adjourned next Thursday at 10 a.m. Thank you.
I can design a kitchen and a bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, I got to go down to the cameras.